We're going to go ahead and call our Planning Commission meeting to order. It is 6:00 PM. And we're going to have our flag salute by Commissioner Solis.
All right. Please place your right hand on your right. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I don't see Denise, but somebody is going to call roll, right?
I will do that.
Okay.
Commissioner Hegel.
Here.
Commissioner Ruiz appears to be absent. Commissioner Solis.
Here.
Thurly Trejo.
Here.
And Commissioner Watts.
Here.
Okay. Do we have any public comments, not on agendized items?
We do not.
Okay. So I'll go ahead and read under the consent calendar. All matters listed in our consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the commission request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary. Speaker cards will be called in the order received. Still images may be displayed on the projector. All other audio and visual use is prohibited. Public comments may also be submitted by email for inclusion into the record. Email comments must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments and submitted to planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. All public participation is governed by council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number 2021-54. All right. The first thing on our consent calendar is our minutes for, it's been a while, June 7th.
Move to adopt the consent calendar.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Hey, or sorry, Commissioner Watts and a second by Commissioner Hegel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carried on that. And that's it on that. So we have our public hearing. Do we have any public comments?
We do not.
We do not. Okay. Can I not read that, or do I need?
So this, so the consent calendar one, you don't necessarily need to read this one. You should read.
Oh, wow.
Sorry.
Okay. Thanks for that memo. Okay. All right. This is a bigger paragraph. Awesome. All right. Any person may submit written comments to the commission before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing, or in written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at or prior to the public hearing. For public hearings, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary, or by submitting an email to be included into the record. Email comments must be submitted to planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. Any person dissatisfied with a decision of the commission may file an appeal of the commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within 15 calendar days after service of written notice of the decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate Community Development Department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number 2021-54. Awesome. Okay. So, we have planning application number PA23-0134. Public convenience or necessity application for a type 20 off-sale beer and wine alcohol license for a new grocery store, Kennedy's Meat Company, located at 401-269 Margarita Road, Suite C-C105. Jaime, you're on.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. So as you mentioned, this is a public need or necessity application for a type 20, which is essentially the off-sale beer and wine alcohol license. The project site is located at 401-269 Margarita Road, Suite C105. The project site is located on the west side of Margarita Road, approximately 1,400 feet north of the Overland and Margarita Road intersection. And to be a little more specific, the business itself is about 300 feet east of the Promenade Mall's Ring Road. At the top-left image, you'll see a more zoomed-in version of the site map along with the tenant space highlighted in red. There are no proposed site changes. The floor plan below shows the 2,000-square-foot suite which Kennedy's currently occupies. And if you look at the top-center image, it demonstrates the cashier and meat display area, which you can see highlighted in the floor plan, the area in red. And then at the top-right, you'll see the refrigerators and goods side of the market where they have the three-door refrigerator for the beer and wine. And then if you were to look at the floor plan and imagine yourself walking in, you're entering, the refrigerators are located on the right-hand side of the store entrance. And now we move on to more of the analysis of the proposed license itself. The applicant seeks the type 20 license, which allows for the convenience of allowing customers to be able to purchase beer, wine, along with their meat and specialty market items. With this license, distilled spirits and premixed cocktail sales are not permitted. Neither is onsite consumption. The anticipated alcohol sales will be strictly ancillary to the market. So, which means the primary sales consist of over 400 different types of meat selections. They have canned goods, sauces, rubs, beverages, limited produce, snacks, et cetera. Alcohol sales are expected to be approximately 5% of the store's sales. The store will be open seven days a week, 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And as shown in the previous slide, the beer and wine display area is limited to three refrigerator doors. So in case you need a reminder as to when are findings for a PCN required, so once the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control has determined that a specific location that is in a census tract has over-concentration of liquor licenses or alcohol licenses, that's when the PCRN is required. So here we look at all the census tracts of Temecula. Temecula itself is comprised of 20 individual census tracts. The license concentration is based on Riverside County population. And then the subject property corresponds specifically to track 4321.16, which is located in the area highlighted here. And as previously mentioned, over-concentration is based on residential population within a census tract. And according to ABC's website, the population as of 2021 in this census tract is 7,142. That means it allows four licenses, and we currently have seven active licenses. So from an environmental standpoint, the project is categorically exempt per section 15301, Class 1, as existing facilities. And with that, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve PA23-0134, subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions, as is the applicant and the president of the company.
Thanks, Jaime. Questions of staff from my colleagues? Bob? Questions? Can you just go back to the census tract, Matt? I just want to understand something. The one with all the numbers? Yeah. So what exactly are those numbers? Is that just the number of the census tract itself?
Correct. They are essentially geological, geographical boundaries that can, you know, sort of bleed into the county areas, they can bleed into Murrieta. So it's not essentially districts that, you know, we were making up or anything like that. Those are census tracts that are set from a federal standpoint, but is used by ABC.
So 432 point whatever, they're all in Temecula, basically? Is that what you're, I'm just trying to understand the map.
432.16 is the corresponding census tract to?
Yeah.
Kennedy's.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just trying to overall understand the census tract. Like 432, that's our number for Temecula, basically?
No.
Point, no.
No. They're not set by the city of Temecula. Those are federal numbers, as Jaime mentioned, for the purposes of the census. And so I don't know what they base that on, but you can see, looking to the right side of the screen in the center there, you've got 432 out in the county as well. So.
Right. Okay.
Generally, generally they, but not entirely.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I was just curious. I wasn't sure what all of that exactly meant. Okay. Thank you. So no questions of staff? Okay.
I do have one question. There's a, one of the conditions says a sign permit. So are they going to change your sign? Are they going to put a new sign?
That's a standard condition we use for modifications, conditional use permits, and projects such as these. It's just letting the applicant know if you wanted to do any more signs, a permit would be required, just like anybody else.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and have the applicant come up, please. Go ahead and introduce yourselves and.
If you can speak into the mic, please.
Not close enough. Matt Fredericks, Winship and Fredericks, representing Kennedy's Meat. Thank you for having us tonight, and thank you for your consideration. And Jaime, thank you for all your work on this project. With us, the principal of Kennedy's Meats, John.
Good evening. My name is John Mayberry, and I am a partner in Kennedy's Meat Company.
Okay. What can you tell us about your meat company?
We're all ears. This is your chance. Sure. Yeah. So we, the company was, I came into the company in 2018 as a partner with Mark. The Kennedy's was a, it was known as Kennedy's Market since 1975. It was started, or 1972, it was out in the Imperial Valley in Heber, California. Started as a small convenience store, they became known for their carne asada. Over the years, it grew, they opened more locations. The family had a little bit of a falling out. That's when I came in, and my partner Mark and I opened the store in Escondido. Did very well. We decided Temecula was a great opportunity for us, so we opened a small store up here. It's been very well-received by the community. We are very grateful for the support that we've, we've had so far. In Escondido, alcohol sales are actually less than 1% of our revenue. It's really something that we like to offer to, as a, like I think Jaime put in the report as an ancillary item. Our primary sales in Escondido come from protein sales, and then we also have a kitchen where we prepare cooked food. And we have an onsite where you can consume onsite in Escondido, but again, it's a very small portion of our revenue. In Temecula here, we don't have, we don't have a kitchen, so we don't cook any food onsite. We don't serve burritos, we don't serve tacos or anything. Everything is to be prepared and consumed at home. And that was the thought with having a beer and wine license here, would, you know, come in and buy tri-tips or steaks or whatever you'd like, and you can pick up a six-pack of a nice IPA or a bottle of wine from a local winery. So you wouldn't have to stop somewhere else, you know? It's, that's, that's what I have to say about our business. Yeah. I'm happy to answer any specific questions you have.
Okay. Well, I'll let my colleagues start. Go ahead, Bob.
I got to visit yesterday, so.
Oh, great.
And I was very impressed.
Thank you.
I was, seeing that there was an alcohol license and a meat company, I thought, this is really odd, so I got to go, I got to go see this. I also like to smoke meats, so I was in there looking as well. But what I found was, it was a store that I would say that you would go to if you're having a family gathering, a picnic, or something like that. It's a store where you could go in and get a lot or a good portion of what you need for that event. And alcohol, you know, beer and wine seemed to fit very perfectly. The case that it's going to go in is very small, there's not going to be a whole lot, you know, there. But if you go in and get your meats, you can also get salad, sauces, every size flour tortilla and, that you can imagine. So all of that is there. I know you have, carne asada was a, was a big deal. There was a lot of people going in and out of the store when I was there, which surprised me. It's in a great location because literally when you come out of the store, you can get right out on a margarita road in two seconds. So it's very convenient for, for something like that. So congratulations. I think you've got, I think you've got a winner.
Thank you, Mr. Hegel. One thing I'd add, if I may, is that we also, we bring, we, in Escondido, we have the kitchen, so we prepare different types of rice and beans and sides that are packaged, and then we have a refrigerated van that we bring those to Temecula. So the idea is that you can come in and pick up tortillas and rice and beans and salsas and chips and whatever you need, and then your protein. You go home and cook the protein, and then just warm up the rice and beans, and everything's ready to go. Or picnic, you know, anything like that, like you said. Yeah.
Okay. Over here. Comments, questions, concerns?
How long have you been open?
In Temecula? We opened in late April. We had a soft opening. I don't remember the exact date. Our grand opening was on Cinco de Mayo, or Cais de Mayo.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. I think it's a great addition. We don't have a lot of meat stores that I know of in town, so I will be by to check it out soon, too. But we're glad to have you as part of the community, and I know in that particular area, I believe there used to be a restaurant in that building.
It was Bahama Buck Shaved Ice.
Oh, okay. Okay. Yeah. Good. So that will be good. There's, well, as you know, there's some vacancies in that, in that section in the center there, but glad to see you in there.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I'd like to say it's a great, great component to the business, and like you said, it's a very small portion. You know, you, you specialize in meats and protein, so I think this would be a great use.
Thank you.
So I also went by there yesterday, and I thought it was an odd location for a meat store. But Jaime said you guys are doing great, and people are finding you, so I think anytime something is good, people find it wherever it is, right? So anyway, was impressed with the store itself, just thought it was an odd location for a meat store. But I think you've done a great job with it, so we welcome you to the community, and thank you. And do we have any public comments?
We do not.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And any discussion from my colleagues? No? Do I have a motion?
I'll move that, I'll move that we approve the project.
I second.
Okay. We have a second from Commissioner Solis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. No one opposed? Congratulations. Thank you. Good luck. It's a great community. We're glad to have you. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to long-range planning project number LR23-0050, amending Title V, 8, and 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code as detailed in the proposed ordinance attached here as Exhibit A. And Mark?
Good evening, Madam Chairperson and Commissioners. Tonight I'll be presenting a Quality of Life Ordinance, Long Range Project Number 23-0050. All right. A little bit of background. The Temecula Municipal Code was originally adopted in 1990, and since its adoption, the Temecula City Council has periodically made amendments to various sections of the code to improve its clarity, correct discrepancy, and implement state law. This proposed ordinance would amend Titles V, Titles, Title 8, and Title 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code. A little bit more background for you. The Planning Commission is required, per Government Code Section 65800, to review and make recommendations to the City Council regarding zoning regulations and amendments to Title 17. The changes to Title V and 8, although not under the purview of the Planning Commission, are included to provide clarity and additional information to the Planning Commission regarding the totality of the proposed ordinance. A little bit of the history for you. This ordinance was presented to the City Council Public Safety Ad Hoc Subcommittee on April 25th. It was presented to the Planning Commission Municipal Code Maintenance Ad Hoc Subcommittee on June 7th, and then we took it again to the City Council Public Safety Ad Hoc Subcommittee on June 13th. Forget me. The quality of life, our areas of concern with this ordinance are massage establishment. Our purpose here is to close loopholes and address observed issues during inspections. For our tobacco shops, we're going to update standards and then streamline processes. And then our smoking in places of employment, this is going to be a result of changes to state law. Before we get into it, I just want to let everyone know here that the ordinance has been a joint effort between the city and the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, and I'd like to give a big thank you to Deputies Kennitzer and Maynard for their invaluable assistance in getting this ordinance prepared. Okay. These black screens here are going to let you know when we're moving from one subject to another. This first one, we're going to get into the proposed changes to massage establishments. So for our proposed updates to massage establishments, we're going to address outcall and pets. We've had a lot of requests for outcall massage establishments, and this ordinance would require that all outcall massage services be permitted with a physician's recommendation or order only. And then there have been incidents during inspections where personal pets were present at massage establishments, and this ordinance would prohibit all animals other than working service dogs from being onsite at massage establishments. Our proposed updates for exempt facilities, we've had increasing requests for exemptions under the guise of wellness practices, specifically Reiki, lymphatic, cupping, and other massage-type activities. This ordinance would clarify these massage and similar wellness practices as massage and require a massage establishment permit and require that such professionals obtain a CAMTC license from the state of California. And then our final, or I'm sorry, our proposed updates for our exempt facilities, we have incidents of medical professionals absently practicing at some massage establishments. This ordinance would require medical professionals, owner or operator, at exempt massage establishments to sign an affidavit that all massages performed under their care and will be onsite during such treatment. And then lastly, for massage, we're going to be correcting for a lack of clarity within the code relating to violations. Right now, the violations are kind of spread out throughout the code, and this ordinance would modify the code to create an inspection and operational-friendly table of standards. That concludes our massage, our proposed changes to massage, and now we're going to be going into tobacco shops. So just kind of let you see what we're working with here. And for our existing tobacco shops, Temecula has 19 tobacco or vape shops. For comparison, Murrieta has nine, Menifee has seven. The, part of the reason for this, the city of Murrieta banned smoke shops. They have several legal nonconforming ones still existing, but there are no new smoke shops coming in in Murrieta. In Menifee, they're reduced to a single zoning designation and require conditional use permit. This is kind of driving them all to come further south, where our relatively lax regulations allowed them to grow. So our state and county requirements for tobacco sales, the state requires an annual state cigarette and tobacco license. Riverside County issues tobacco licenses for cities that have adopted the county's tobacco ordinance, ordinance number 838. Temecula adopted its own ordinance in 2006 and took over the licensing of tobacco retailers. Presently, tobacco shops are permitted by right in community commercial, highway tourist, and service commercial, and require a conditional use permit in neighborhood commercial. Our proposed updates to tobacco shops for their permitting and operations, the proposed ordinance would implement an annual tobacco shop permit program to address quantity. We would have a maximum number of these shops within the city at a rate of one shop per 10,000 residents, or roughly 11 stores at our present population. And then separation, we're going to implement separation requirements from sensitive receptors and add sep, and separation between such establishments. For this, we'll use a distance of 500 feet. And then signage, as you saw with our images, a little excessive right now, we're going to have limits based on public health and preclude them from being on windows and doors. As far as operations, we're going to prohibit doors being kept open and staff lording at entryways. These are businesses that cater exclusively to adults 21 and up. There's no reason for these doors to be open. And then accessory uses, this ordinance would prohibit samples being given out and lounge-type The proposed updates for new technology and products, the proposed ordinance would update the municipal code to address vape and electronic cigarettes, and then non-tobacco chew or dip products that contain nicotine, and then various tobacco-related definitions that need an update. And then proposed updates for our proximity to residential property. This proposed ordinance would remove tobacco shops as a conditionally permitted use in neighborhood commercial zoning district, and we have none presently in that zoning designation. And then our proposed updates to our tobacco retailer's license, the proposed ordinance would update the tobacco retail license process to assign duties to specific departments to alleviate confusion and streamline the process. That completes the tobacco shop portion, and now we're getting into the smoking in places of employment. Smoking within enclosed places of employment is prohibited by state law. This proposed ordinance would remove an outdated exclusion for tobacco shops. And then another change in state law, reduce the number of hotel rooms allowed to be designated as smoking rooms. The proposed ordinance would amend the number of smoking rooms allowed from 25% to 20%. The remainder would be non-smoking. And then of the 19 hotels within the city, only two permit, or only to offer smoking As far as secret determination, staff has determined that there is no possibility that the adoption of this ordinance will have a significant effect on the environment. Accordingly, this ordinance is not subject to the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15061B3. Staff's recommendation is to adopt the PC Resolution recommending the City Council adopt the ordinance and find the project category, categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act per Section 15061B3. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Questions of staff? Yes, Bob.
Okay. I'm going to start out on the massage, let's see, page 10, 5.22 dash, or .080B17. I'll read the part that is confusing to me.
Okay.
The requirement that an exterior door must remain unlocked at all times does not apply to any massage establishment owned by one individual with one or no employees or independent contractors. I wasn't, I wasn't sure if that related to the fact that you have one owner, then, and I gathered either one employee or no employees, and they're, they're there by themselves, or does this relate to one individual who is running the business at any one time, that there is, because they're there by themselves, they can lock the door? So I was.
I'm a little confused. Where, is this the ordinance, page 10?
Okay. So page 10 on the document that, that we got, the PDF file. So we're at, let's see.
It's on the Level 2 violation?
Level 2 violations.
It's on Section 9?
5.22.08. It's B17.
Sorry. Section 10 of the resolution.
Thank you.
Yeah. Section 10 of the resolution, Level 2.
B17, and it's the last, last line. Starts with the requirement that an exterior door must remain unlocked.
This isn't a proposed change. This is taking the existing massage ordinance and implementing it in table form. I'm not 100% sure exactly what this is referring to.
I just found it confusing that I thought what you were trying to say there I just found it confusing that I, I thought what you were trying to say there is that if a person is working by themselves, they can lock the door. If they're not working by themselves, the door must remain unlocked. That's, that's...
The exterior door, so not the interior door.
That's the way I read it, too. That's the way I read it, too.
To me, that doesn't say that, that's, but I thought that's what was implied, or that's what it was...
Yeah, the point is that if you've got multiple people, three, four, or five people working in the facility, why would you need the door locked?
Right.
It's a security issue if you're by yourself.
Right.
So you can lock the front door.
Yeah.
My understanding is...
Okay, so I, I just thought that might need clarification because I thought I knew what you need, what you were trying to say, but it didn't say that to me, so...
Sure, and, and just to clarify, so the portion of the ordinance that's actually within the purview of the Planning Commission is the Title Seventeen amendment, so we can still tinker with changes to Title Five and Title Eight. And I think there are going to be other further cleanup changes that we talked about making, so we can certainly take that under submission for consideration for further changes.
Okay, then the rest is related to tobacco sales. D2. The chief of police shall deny all tobacco shop permit applications if the max...
So this is on page 15?
Page 15, uh, D2. The chief of police shall deny all tobacco perm, uh, shop permit applications if the maximum number of tobacco shops under section blah, blah, blah has, has been met. So my question is, a license gets suspended, and then things get fixed, and they want to reactivate their license. Yet, the number of tobacco shops has already met, has already met the, the number goal. Would, can it be reactivated, or does it, does it fall under, or are they out of luck?
Are we, the tobacco shop permit, it doesn't have a suspension provision. It has, it can be revoked. The tobacco retail, there's two different licenses. We have a tobacco retailer's license, which is for anyone who sells tobacco. That is your Albertsons, your Vons, Staters. That's anyone who sells tobacco from the state has a tobacco retailer's license. It's a minimal application, just making sure that who they are is who they say they are, and that's it. That's for everyone who does ancillary sales. The tobacco shop permit is specifically for, in places that sell exclusively tobacco products and paraphernalia, things like that. That license cannot be suspended. It can only be issued or revoked. The tobacco retailer's license has a provision where during violations, they can be suspended for a certain period of time, and they have to prohibit or prevent sales of tobacco during that prohibition. That would be more for if Vons or someone sold illegally to a minor or something like that. That license would be suspended, not the tobacco shop permit.
Okay, so if the, if the tobacco shop permit is revoked, then they would be starting from scratch if they were...
Correct.
They'd have to, okay, got it.
Yeah, our, our, my take on this was we had a very successful program with the massage establishment permit. We had a very high number of those, and then through the massage establishment permit, we've whittled them down significantly, and we're taking the same approach with this, with tobacco shops as we did for the massage establishments.
So, right now, we've got nineteen?
Correct.
With our population, what would be the number again that...
I believe it's eleven. It's based on the, uh, nu- our population based by the state of California's Finance Department that we get.
Okay, so it may take us a number of years to go down from nineteen to eleven or so?
Correct.
Okay.
But to your, I think to your original question, you were using the word suspended.
Yeah.
So there's no suspension. They can be revoked, but there is no middle ground period. You have it, you're in, you, if, if the city is moving to revoke it, it's still yours until it's revoked.
Until it's revoked.
So even if that, you know, that, the revocation went over past January 1, they would still, they would still be on the books as their permit.
Right.
Until it's, it's actually revoked.
So once it's revoked, if you, if you were seeking a license, you would be seeking a brand-new license.
That's right.
A brand-new permit.
That's correct.
Okay. Why don't you have somebody else go, and I'll come back to this.
Are you sure?
Yeah, because I could, some of the questions got answered. I just want to make sure I don't spend a lot of time wasting time.
So, as it stands now, we're going to be, if this is adopted, we would be above that limit.
Correct.
If that's an acceptable number, until gradually, we would get down to eleven. So, I guess simply put, we will not be creating a situation where somebody would be forced out of business that's currently in business.
Correct. We have, as the ordinance is written, thirty days after adoption, or I'm sorry, thirty days after second read, it would go into, it would be enforced. From there, every tobacco shop owner has sixty days to ensure they're compliant. And then we're not going to issue any tobacco shop permits until January 1 of next year. So as long as they're compliant by then, they'll be good to go. So we won't be taking anyone's business away.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Fernando?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. So, is, is this massage, uh, permit, is it something that staff goes out there and then looks at, like, on a yearly basis, and sees if they meet all the requirements that...
We have our RSO team. They do inspections periodically, and the ordinance is written so that massage establishments get inspected at least twice a year. But Deputy Kennitzer here can answer more details than I.
Okay.
Yeah, that was my question, too, like, I'm not trying to interrupt you, Fernando, but
Yeah, no.
we, like, looking through this, it's great. I love that we're doing this, for sure. And then it's just a question of how we enforce that. So that's been my question. So, maybe you can answer that.
Sure. So, per the municipal code, we can go out, RSO, we have a team, we take, uh, I go with CORE. And the CORE team, we come up with a list, just random locations, two times a year. And we go in and see if everyone's following the rules. And we basically take the municipal code with us and kind of go down the row of, of all the violations and see if any of those are very obvious to us. It was awesome that they were able to change it from tier one to tier, tier two, kind of making it a graph, because it was really confusing before figuring out which ones were severe, which would cause them to become denied or even get their permit revoked, to the lesser of, you know, just maybe having a locked door. Those violations, those can add up, and then eventually it could become a situation of revocation, but mainly we're looking for the tier ones.
So, if there, if there's a complaint, though, you can go out there also, not just the two times a year?
Yes.
Okay, so if there's a complaint, you have the two times a year. If you ever have any kind of reason for going out there, you can go out there.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't keep us... Right, it's just the compliance check portion of it is the two times a year.
Okay, all right.
My, my other concern is aesthetics of the facades of these establishments, because I, I'm not familiar with all of them in Temecula, but from what I've seen out when I'm out on the field, they kind of all have the same look. And I wanted to know if, as part of this, if there's something that we can add that. Planning can go out there once a year to see aesthetically if all the windows are covered, or, you know, they have stuff hanging from the facade, or if there's too much lights. Is that something that is in here, part of the section that's changing, or...
No, our planners don't necessarily go out for that enforcement portion. Our code enforcement team goes out typically with our, when our RSO team goes out as well. And our code enforcement, they're the ones who are checking for signage, municipal code compliance as far as the structure, things like that go. So that's how we get that enforcement mechanism. We don't have planners out there.
So they, they do check for aesthetics? They do check for exterior hangings?
Yes, but they have the same issue as the sheriff's office. The violations were kind of spread out, not easily digestible. Hopefully with this table form, it'll be much easier for everyone to figure out what is a violation and what is not.
I can add a little something to that. So, RSO goes out with the CORE team, which is RSO staff. They go out with building and safety staff, fire staff, and code enforcement staff. And they go out and they do the periodic checks. And that can happen twice a year, or it can happen many, many more times than that, and it often does happen more times than that. And it has been over the last couple of years since the ordinance was changed originally. So they all have their individual roles while they're there, obviously, fire, building, safety. Code is looking for illegal signage. Code is looking for illegal stuff on the outside of the building, whatever it may be, every single time they go. That's when we proactively go out. Now, beyond that, in between those times, the code enforcement team works as a reactive force. So they're waiting for a code, code complaint to come in, and that's how they operate within the city for everything. So if a sign goes up, that's an illegal sign, someone reports it, they'll go out. That's in between the kind of active enforcement with RSO. We don't get a lot, I can tell you, we don't get a lot of complaints about the exterior, although I have, I know exactly what you're talking about. There are oftentimes illegal signs. They've blacked out the windows or things like that. Those will be, you know, those will be addressed at the time that we go out. But we don't get a lot of complaints that would drive those in between the active enforcement from RSO.
Is, is there, I've just been, from experience, um, we used to do something when I used to work for a different city. I, uh, we used to go out there on a yearly basis, because there was like, kind of like a committee, right? So they had to get a yearly permit, so they wouldn't be able to operate until they were approved by kind of like this little committee. And that's how every year, once a year, you would kind of, not do like a checkup, but make sure everything looked okay, instead of, um... I, I'm, I, I think sheriffs have like a certain purview, and I think planning or code enforcement have a different purview. So I think that worked well, and I just wanted to know what was the process here to see if there was any process that maybe you could stop business from them if they don't, aesthetically, if they don't look pleasing, or if, like you said, you go multiple times. You go multiple times for the same one, or...
Yeah, um, RSO and the team goes out to, can go out to the same one more than once for a year, that's for sure. Absolutely, and I think that, that happens on, wouldn't say on a regular basis, but it, it has happened. I know that it's happened. What I think I hear you're saying is that when, we do have a renewal process every year.
Right.
Um, and when they come in, they have to go through, you know, they have to demonstrate that they're in good standing and that they've met all the rules, and they've got a business license, and, um, and if, and if they're, uh, if they pass all the muster, they, they're reissued a permit. But what I'm hearing you say is that you would like us to add in, what does the facade look like? Is it up to code as one of the standards for getting the renewal?
Right. Sorry.
Yeah.
I, I think I'm looking...
No, I'm asking you, is that, does that sound right?
That kind of sounds like something that I, that I would like, where, I mean, in, in, in conjunction with operating the business, then they also have to meet kind of city appearances of how we would want that business to look like. Just like any retail business, or any coffee shop, or, you know, the, the windows aren't covered up, or stuff isn't hanging, or...
Sure.
Just like any other business operates, I think we should be, be the, treat them the same that, hey, if a coffee shop or retail store, and they don't cover up their windows, then why should other businesses, or...
We, we would be limited to what the code allows for the exterior of the building, and we wouldn't be able to treat the, these businesses any other way that we wouldn't treat every other business. I know what you mean. I know what you mean. So just to put that out there, it'd be illegal signs, it'd be, you know, illegal colors or changing of the facade without a permit, those kinds of things. We, we can certainly talk about how to incorporate that into the process. That's not something that we had thought about previously. That would take a little bit more active effort on the city's part to go out and check every year, all the facades, to make sure they were compliant. But it is something that we can go back and take a look at and see about working in if that's what the Planning Commission wants us to do.
I don't know, maybe I, if it's going to be that much work, maybe I want to be able to see all of them, see how they all operate, and then see if that's something that the planner should focus on, if it's something that does need to be looked at. I'm just talking kind of generally from my experience. Like I said, I don't know how these, all of them look, but I would be very interested in, from, from, from other ones that I've seen out on the, when I'm outside. I've never really gone to one.
Well, I mean, if, if you're asking us to, to take a look at changing the process to incorporate that, then, then we can do that, and, and, you know, the work will be whatever the work is, that's okay. But if, um, when, you know, we can do that. We can take a look at that.
So the issue of blocking the windows is considered a level-two violation, so it's already within the code. And I think what I heard, um, being said was that when you go out, you're inspecting for, you, you receive a complaint, you're inspecting for that, but obviously, if you see some other violation, that's going to be identified and noted as well. Similarly, you have inspections at least once a year, but potentially twice a year for businesses. And so that would be something that would be identified when they're out in the field. Um, it doesn't, I think what I heard Luke saying is that it, it's not done at the renewal time, but it's done through the periodic inspections that are happening throughout the year.
So right here, it says, so if they have, so if they violate three times and their business is, is revoked?
It can, it would, can be revoked, and so they would get a notice of violation for revi- or notice that it's going to be revoked, and then there's like an appeal process. But the, the specific requirement regarding the windows that you were mentioning is in 5.22.080A1B. There's also the lighting with the signage, I think that you mentioned as well, that is in 5.22.080A2. So those are already requirements in the code that they must abide by, and those are level-two violations.
I think I, while, while you're looking, I think he's on to something, though. I do think it might be something that we need, could be more aware of, too, and just, I mean, it's in there, right? But just kind of really looking for that, too, and making sure that we're, that that's something that's a concern.
We, we can absolutely make it an emphasis for code enforcement when they go. There are a lot of things to be dealt with when they go there, but we can say, hey, listen, of the things, this needs to be a top priority. Make sure you're paying attention to the facade of the building and that it's code compliant.
Yeah, because I think, you know, that's what gives our city that look, right? I mean, that's important, and as planners, and as a planning commission, that's what we're looking at, too. I think that's why, Fernando, you brought that up, right?
That's, yeah, my, my concern is more the appearance, and when there is, like, you, like, like the sheriffs go out there twice a year or, or periodically. If also someone aesthetically goes out there and looks at it, on, even on, just on a yearly basis, and there's, I don't know how many businesses there are, but, um, I think that helps a little. Because you, you really get to see, you get to see all of them, and you get to, right away, hey, you have to fix this, 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 and you have thirty days to do it. So it's not really, uh, where, where they don't have to revoke their license, right? Where it's something that maybe they can, maybe they didn't know, maybe that business didn't know they couldn't black tint out the windows or something, I, I don't know.
Well, I think it would have to be part of, so it's a level-two violation, and, and they should, they are obligated to know what the rules are of the city for the business that they're operating. So if three times code enforcement goes out there and sees those windows blacked out, like, the first time, they would get, you know, a notice, and then there would be an administrative citation. So if they get three administrative citations for the same violation, that could be grounds for revocation. And arguably, if they didn't know the first time, that first violation should tell them, don't do it again.
Okay, so say, say one person owns that business, and they get revoked, and there's three people that, there's three masseuse there. Can that business be sold to one of the three that are established in that building?
Um, no, under our establishment procedures, and I'll have to look it up. If I recall correctly, there's some provision that you can't get the license again at the same location if it's already been revoked.
You have to wait a year.
That's correct. Yeah, and that's in, if I may, uh, section 5.22 of the Temecula Municipal Code that governs massage establishments. And, you know, when, when I, I see Solis' concern with regards to multiple owners, and then it's sort of like a loophole where they're kind of playing musical chairs with that. That was a loophole we closed in 2019. So I was working with a massage establishment before that code was amended, and it was one of the, the concerns that we had because of police at the time. and it was one of the, the, the concerns that we had because of police, uh, at the time, you know, was playing whack-a-mole with the exact same establishment. So what we did was staff, PD, planning commission input, everybody got together, and we took the best practices from California to craft a municipal code that would close all of those loopholes. We've had a lot of suc- success with that. We went from, believe it or not, over seventy massage establishments in the, in the city of Temecula, we're now down to, um, low thirties or high twenties. Um, there, we didn't want there to be any take with any of the good operators. So the best practices that we had for massage establishment is essentially, um, what we're applying for these, um, tobacco shops. If you continue operating legally with everything and all the provisions and, and pres- prescriptions that are within the code, you're just gonna apply for a renewal. In between these inspections that, that you're referring to, we have complaints that can come through. We have code enforcement that, um, that could be doing these, these, um, uh, what do you call them? The checks, compliance checks. So we're covered in, on that aspect. And, uh, and yeah, I, I think with, with the direction that we're going with regards to tobacco license, licenses, we saw the successes in that, and we mirrored that formula to apply it to the tobacco shops. And the windows, the lights, all that stuff is codified as well.
I have one more, one more question. Uh, how many, uh, licenses can be in one business?
Is this in reference to massage or the-
Yeah, massage, no.
Just one license, it's one massage establishment.
But-
Permit per business. So each individual masseuse has to be CAMTC certified. So that's a separate state license, but the establishment itself has one, one permit.
So then how many masseuse can be in one business?
There's no limit on that.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions?
Uh, can you come back?
Okay.
I did it for tobacco, but I had to write my notes.
Okay. Are you good?
I got two more.
Okay.
Okay, um, page twenty, and it is level one violations of, this is, uh, tobacco. And it, the first violation, no tobacco shop shall be located within one thousand feet of a sensitive receptor. Um, I thought you said five hundred feet.
We did, the, uh, this portion of the ordinance is still being amended, as Maricela mentioned in the beginning. Um, we reduced that from one thousand to five hundred. We had a couple businesses that would be potentially excluded from this. So we amended it down to five hundred feet, which is on the higher end of what our other cities are doing that permit tobacco shops.
Okay. Um, the last one is on page twenty-two. Paragraph three, or section three, J one. Um, whoop, let's see, second paragraph, I believe this is still related to tobacco shops, yet that it says, uh, it talks about revoking or refusing to renew a massage establishment permit. And I was confused as to why that would be in the tobacco portions.
That's why I'm all red, you're catching my typo here on the dais.
Okay. I'm done.
I have-
Fernando?
Yeah, if you could go back to your presentation, I think it was like the second slide.
And don't go anywhere. We like you there.
I, I, I think it had the picture of the, of one of the businesses. So like that one? So is, is that one here in Temecula?
Yes, these are both establishments in the city.
So how, so like, for example, the lighting and all those signs there? Is it, is this still up like that?
I don't know, I haven't been over to this particular location. Um, these were noticed, and this is kinda part of the reason we're adjusting, we're addressing this. And right now, our tobacco shops aren't on an inspection schedule like our massage establishments are. Uh, but this ordinance will put them on the same inspection schedule as massage establishments, so they'll be getting a lot more attention from our code enforcement and RSO as, uh, we proceed forward.
On a yearly, yearly basis?
Yes.
Think I know where this is at. I think I've seen it. Okay, that, I think, my, my, my concern is really the exterior of, you know, these, these buildings, the, the plaza, cause there's a lot of bills, other businesses, there might be a restaurant next door, or, and this just doesn't look good.
Well, the changes to the ordinance, or, or the ordinance we're proposing would not allow this. So, all of this you see here would not be allowed, up into, and including the door being propped open.
But even, even right now, the code doesn't allow any business to look like this, right?
For most of that, yes.
The, the code allows for any business-
But that's, but, they're not on an inspection schedule. The code enforcement department works off of complaints. So if we don't get a complaint, we don't go out. Now, that doesn't mean that if something egregious isn't taking place, that it's not addressed. But there are a lot of code enforcement violations in the city. We get, this is, I'm trying, not trying to make excuses, but the, hundreds of code cases a month, so, um, we did know that, notice these things. Code brought all of this to our attention.
Got it.
And that's what led to the ordinance itself.
All right, understand. Okay, thank you. I just have one more, uh, clarification. It's about the... It's about the, the distance? I can't find it.
Yeah, the ordinance-
How you define the distance from one business to being to the other? So are you taking the perimeter of the building and then going from the exterior building to another building? Instead of property lines, or?
We are going from the entrance of the, uh, tobacco shop to the property line of the sensitive receptor.
Okay. And that's a thousand feet? I, I kinda didn't understand.
It is five hundred feet.
Five hundred, it's just, it's wrong.
Oh, I read the wrong section then, okay.
No, it just hasn't been changed to five hundred feet. Okay, Gary?
I'm done. Thank you, guys.
Sensitive receptor. Give me a definition, please.
Sensitive receptors would be any, uh, churches, schools, parks, residences, anyone who may be impacted by such activities.
Okay. So five hundred feet, then?
Yes.
Okay.
To that property line.
And Luke may wanna answer this one, but I'm sure it's possible for when code enforcement goes out to respond to complaints, that they would gladly welcome a planning commissioner go along to see how everything goes? Would that be possible? Like a ride-along with the police officer?
You certainly can go on ride-alongs with the code enforcement team, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
It just, as nothing more than an educational process to see how it works. That's all.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I would suggest that, uh, for those that are interested, that would be something that they could take part in, see how the whole system actually works when it's put together.
Right.
That might be, um-
I like that idea.
Might be a good educational, uh, tool for, for you. Okay, I think that's all I have for right now.
Okay. Um, most of my questions were answered, and I, um, I talked to you earlier, and about, the one question I did have was on a neighborhood commercial, which we don't have any, I noticed, right? But on a neighborhood commercial would, would require CUP, correct?
Correct. Part of this ordinance is removing that as a conditionally permitted use. So neighborhood commercial, which is the commercial closest to residences by its type, um, would not be permitted.
At all.
At all.
Okay, awesome. Okay, that was my question on that. All right, this is a lot of work. Thank you so much, and we're so, I can only speak for myself, but I am grateful that you're doing this, and cleaning everything up, and making it easier for our police to go out and do their job, and code enforcement to do their job. And I would love a ride-along with you, with code enforcement. That would be great, if that's something we can do. I didn't even know we could do that with code enforcement. Good job bringing that up.
I have one more question.
Oh, my gosh, okay.
I'm sorry. Just one more. Okay, so I know there's a maximum number of tobacco shops right now, right? So say one, um, would like to sell to another, like to, from one business to another business, and say that business doesn't operate for a certain amount of time. Is there like a non-conformity to when a business is established? Or how long a business can, let me feel, I'm explaining myself.
Are, are you referencing selling the license, like a massage?
No, I'm, I'm referencing to like selling a, a business, like a tobacco shop.
Would, the license would be transferable to a new owner?
Okay. But say that business closes down, and there's an existing, you could say, use of a tobacco, uh, license. So say that business doesn't operate for a certain amount of time. Does that non-conformity, or like, say there's too many other businesses, does that one go away?
It's not a conditional use permit, so it doesn't run with the land. It would be valid for one year. Um, so if they, it would be good from January to December of that year. If they stop selling for six months out of the year, go on vacation, and come back, their license is still valid. Um, they would obviously have all the code requirements to maintain, but they could. If they let it lapse at, come December, and their license expires, then no.
Okay.
It would be an expired license, and it would be expired. Yes.
Got it. Okay.
You good?
Yes.
Yes? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? No? Okay, thank you so much, and we don't have any public comments on this?
We do not.
We do not? Okay. So, all right, I don't think I ever opened this up.
No, you were still in the question and answer period.
Yeah.
But there's no one here, so for the record, there's, um, no public comment.
Right.
This item.
So I didn't really need to open it or close it, correct?
Correct, and if I could just clarify that, um, there is a provision that says a tobacco shop permit can't be sold or transferred. So under your scenario, Commissioner Solis, someone decides to sell the business, that new business owner would need to come in and obtain, obtain a permit. They'd be allowed to because the business was sold, but they'd have to get their own independent tobacco shop permit. The permit doesn't transfer with the business.
Not like a CUP.
Correct.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we're good on public hearing things? Maricela? We're good on?
Yes, correct.
Okay, okay, awesome. All right, so what are we actually voting on here? Because we don't really have anything to say about five and eight.
Yeah, you're voting on just the recommendation of the ordinance to-
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so would someone like to make a motion on that?
I would like to make a motion.
Oh. I like it. And what is your motion?
Motion to approve, um, or what, is it to approve, or is it to recommend?
To recommend approval of the-
To recommend approval.
Ordinance.
Of the ordinance. To the city council, right?
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, motion carried. So, thank you, thank you for your work on that. Um, Mark, and Hyman tonight, thank you both. And we're gonna go ahead to commissioner reports, if you have any?
Yeah, I attended the Fourth of, Fourth of July parade, it was very fun for my first time. Had a blast, my wife and my little niece went with me, and it was great. Had a, had a good time.
Awesome.
Invite everyone to go if they haven't gone, at least one time.
That's right. Awesome. Gary?
I've noticed that, um, the past, uh, well, let's just say, um, our, our journalistic, uh, journalism, um, community has really lost a lot of respect over the last few years. Um, primarily because objectivity seems to be a foreign thing. And I thought that, you know, the syndrome was four years, three years ago, something like that, but it's clear to me that there's a new syndrome out there. It's Temecula Derangement Syndrome now. So, uh, the, the newspapers are finding everything they can to find something wrong. But I think it's gonna backfire because from what I can see, there's gonna be tons of people that wanna move here. For everything that's happening, instead of moving out of state, so that's crazy. But that all relates to, an ancient artifact here, a newspaper. And I just wanted to bring this to, to your attention in case you missed it. But there was a really interesting, intriguing article in Sunday's paper, and it is titled, "Let CEQA Die So The Golden State Can Thrive." And it has a lot of information in there pertaining to the problems that we, as a community, and we as a commission tackle all the time with affordable housing, et cetera, et cetera. So I know that that was a topic that was discussed at the APA conference in, um, Garden Grove. And I don't think it's got much traction, but it certainly is an intriguing idea. And certainly, I think all of us that have been involved with planning for any length of time realize just how cumbersome and how CEQA can be used as a deliberate obstructive tool, as opposed to trying to accomplish something good. So, um, nothing more than, if you missed it, it's just interesting reading, and it's, it's just interesting thought, regardless of what you think of CEQA. But certainly, there has been talk of revising CEQA and changing it, but it's met with tremendous resistance, as you can guess, primarily from the environmental side of things, but also from others as well. So, um, stay tuned, have your thoughts on it, but, uh, you know, we deal with it so much. Uh, staff does, really, but, uh, I mean, our expectation is that we are on top of CEQA, and we at least understand it. So it's interesting when these ideas come up. And I think Dan Walters had discussed some of that at the, at the conference that we were at, and it was, it was very interesting. Anyhow, that's, that's just something aside. Uh, I don't usually say things like that, but, uh, but why not? So, um, anyhow, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Bob, anything?
Yeah, two things. Uh, one is I got to enjoy the, uh, Temecula fireworks from the top of a building across the street from the fire department, and it was spectacular from there. What a view from, uh, uh, being up high. I was able to bring a couple of my grandkids, and, uh, they were kinda over the moon. They were not expecting to go on top of a building to watch it, and it was a great show. City put on a spectacular show this year. Second thing, I just want to thank Public Works and, uh, Community Development, uh, JR Richardson, who's, uh, a member of the Traffic, uh, Commission. And I got to meet with the two departments to talk about, um, something that came up at our last meeting, which was the Inez Road issue. And, uh, we had some ideas about ways to help solve that problem, as well as, uh, staff brought quite a few ideas. And I know they're gonna be, uh, having a workshop on that issue, I think at your next, the next meeting, next, uh, traffic safety meeting. So if anyone wants to, uh, to sit and listen, I think it's, uh, I think it's a challenge that is a very difficult challenge for the city, since the road is a road that is, uh, I would call it kinda half, half a, half a neighborhood road and half a out, you know, outside public road, you know, a road that everybody travels on. But, uh, on one of my trips down the road, I counted nineteen driveways that came out onto the road. And, uh, that is more than some, some small neighborhoods have in, in our city. So there is a traffic problem on parts of Inez Road. There is a traffic problem on all of Inez Road now, due to the backups coming from San Diego area. We think that when that su- situation is semi-resolved with the new work that's being done with, uh, the interstate, that, uh, hopefully a good portion of that problem will go away. We've seen similar problems, uh, for instance, before Butterfield was built, there was neighborhoods that were being, uh, had a lot of traffic from cut-throughs. Once that, that road was built, that problem went, went away, and we're hoping the same thing will happen here. But anyway, I just wanted to thank everybody for, for meeting with us, and-
Are you talking about Inez and Deportola, or Inez?
Yes, Inez and Deportola, the, that whole, whole roadway there.
So when is that meeting?
Um, there, when, Ron, is, when is your, the next- There, Ron, is when is your, the next Public Traffic Safety Commission meeting?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday?
Twenty-seventh.
All right. Yeah. Watched the fireworks. Watched both of them at the same time, Pachanga and Temecula. I bet you want to know where I saw them. Anyway, it was pretty awesome. In, in the pool, yeah. In, in a pool. It was pretty fun. So thanks to all of my colleagues for being here tonight and for your input. I appreciate that. And that means that we're doing our job if we're asking questions and, and not just saying yes to everything, but wanting to know and understand things. I appreciate that. We miss Adam tonight. And next is our, our guy. Oh, I forgot the crown.
Crown?
Yeah, remember King Luke?
Oh.
Yeah, forgot that. It's just been so long, we forgot.
Yeah.
Next time.
I think we have subcommittee reports.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I got ahead of myself. Subcommittee reports. Any subcommittee reports? It's been a while.
Well, the only subcommittee report I have is, is one we just discussed.
Okay. So we're good?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. All right, now it is...
Yeah, it was, Commissioner Hagel brought it up, but I don't know if you've noticed, but the horse at the roundabout was taken out completely.
What was the reason for that?
Not just the arm this time. The entire horse was taken out. I don't know if it's going to be back. It was pretty mangled up. It was kind of interesting because, and Ron probably going to talk about it, but whoever hit it, there are no skid marks or tire tracks at all anywhere inside of the roundabout. So they hit it and were flying through the air. Took out the horse and then flew over the rest of the roundabout. So you'll see some barricades out there. Those are temporary, obviously. And yeah, so the, the design redesign, whatever we're going to come up with is, is underway for that roundabout.
Giant pile of sand in the middle.
And we're, we're going to be building another one too, a Jedidiah Smith too. And so we've learned a lot of lessons. There's a, there's a lot of technical design considerations that are difficult at La Paz because of the way you're coming down towards it from higher than the roundabout. So we've learned, I've learned a lot recently about roundabouts, but just wanted to let you know.
I wondered why the hot horse was gone.
That's not going to stay like that. And the barricades are temporary and we're looking at it. And the last thing is just really quick. I don't know if any of you had the chance to go to the Sunset Market last week. I think there's another one next week. If you didn't get a chance to go, go.
Yeah.
It's cool. Sun's going down, market's popping, Old Town's going crazy. It's just a really cool vibe and I would highly suggest you go check it out.
Is it all through Old Town or where is it specifically?
It's just on, on the Main Street Y. So from, from Front Street to City Hall. The Mercedes was not closed last time. It's going to be closed next time, just to make it a little more safer. They're going to relocate some of the food vendors from the, the dirt lots to the Civic Quad here. Some of the dust was a little bit of an issue. Just kind of feeling it out, see how it works.
Yeah, we plan on going next month.
Yeah, it's, it's cool. So I would say go check it out.
And is it going to be in August too or just this month?
Uh, I think there's one more after.
One more in August?
Yeah, yeah, one more in August. And, you know, you never know and might catch on and be a weekly thing here in the future. So we'll see how it goes. But go check it out. You've got two more chances.
Okay. Is that it? All right. Okay. Ron, you're the man now.
Okay. So I've got a few updates. I'll be real quick since we're already talking about Sunset, Summer Sunset Series with the market and everything. If you are down here next Wednesday at 5 o'clock, we're going to be having a community meeting here in the conference center for the new skate park. So our CIP division is doing that and conducting that at 5:00 PM. So if you want to come by and see what they're talking about with regards to the skate park, it'll be the same night. So kill two birds with one stone. What Luke mentioned, yes, it's true. We're going to be talking to the Los Ranchitos Association. They'll be coming in on Thursday for our Public Safety Traffic Commission. We'll talk about some of the implementation that we're going to do for speeding, for volume of traffic. As far as the roundabout goes, we do have some ideas, but we do want to bring to council some serious safety analysis and options for them to consider. So we're going to be going through that process. So those barricades might be up for a little while, but they are temporary in nature and it's really more about visibility than, you know, thinking that somebody's going to go through there again. But, you know, the accidents we've had have been, thankfully, no one has been killed. No one's been hurt seriously. But obviously there's something going on and so we're going to address it. And we'll be meeting with the Los Ranchitos HOA on Thursday at our FOC to do a forensic analysis of the horse. We're going to be, we're going to be looking at the horse in detail to see what can be done. So that's, that's Thursday. We're going to be meeting with them on that.
This Thursday? You're meeting with them?
Yeah, we're meeting at the FOC, so we're going to be...
And then the, the, but this, but this, the following Thursday on the 27th is a public traffic safety.
Correct, correct. So tomorrow...
So do you anticipate Los Ranchitos at that meeting?
We anticipate the same concerned residents that have been to our planning commission, the ones that came to city council. We anticipate the same residents coming out in voice of...
And helping to have some answers for them, correct?
And I, I think it's more of support too for the workshop we've already had with them and kind of reiterating their concerns so that the Public Safety Traffic Commission can hear the same thing that the planning commission heard and the same thing that the city council heard.
Okay, all right.
Ron, do you know if we ever have had a DUI checkpoint along Inez or any, anywhere, like on a Friday or Saturday night coming out of Old Town in that direction? I mean, I know since, I forget how many, I think it was 12 or, that was, I think, the 13th accident there in the last year. And I think, I think I was told that three quarters of those accidents were DUI related. And so, you know, and there, I gather a lot of them are in the evening, people coming out of Old Town.
Majority have been evening and wee hours of the morning. So a few, this last one happened during the day. And it happened actually when we were meeting with the Los Ranchitos on a different matter. So it happened at the exact time. It is kind of sporadic. The last DUI checkpoint that was near this location was actually on Front and First and leaving Old Town. So there is, there have been DUI checkpoints looking at the traffic from Old Town, but there hasn't been specifically one on Inez or Santiago or anything. But there, there has been one there. I think it was a couple of months ago that we had one there.
The big sandlot would be, you know, I know DUI checkpoint is not the easiest thing to set up. You have to have places for cars to, you know, pull over safely and all that. But the, the sandlot that's there that we, the city owns would, would make a good, probably a good spot to be able to set one up there and catch people coming either out of Old Town on Santiago or for that matter, going around and coming down, you know, Diaz.
I'll, I'll make note, but typically we're not the ones choosing those locations. It's the sheriff's office.
Yeah, it's just, I think, if it's a recommendation you can make to them, it might be, might be a good thing.
All right. And then the other item I had was July 28th through 30th, so that's coming up next week as well. Rainbow Canyon Road may be shut down because we're going to be doing the final repairs for all of that storm damage. So we do have traffic control that is going to be ready at intermittent times for, basically we want to stabilize that main slope that fell down. And there is one big boulder we'd like to see if we can get out. But we are not wanting to do a complete shutdown, so it's going to be intermittent based upon traffic volumes. But we're going to have some crews out there the 28th through the 30th, so that weekend. There is going to be some work being done by our city crews and some contractors that we are hiring to do that.
During regular hours or?
It'll be, we're going to try to do it more on the off-hours, off-peak. And then pickleball, I wanted to give you status on that. We are waiting for 90% designs from the consultant. So there's been some changes with regards to the design of the concrete and some engineering specifications. Still looking at a March to April beginning construction kind of date, maybe getting a bid out there, requesting bids from contractors, but that's still on track. I will share those 90% plans once we get them, but for now, we're working with the consultant on that. The CRC, the bathrooms are being redone and there's a tour going on with TCSD to make sure everything's accepted. We're thinking within two weeks, those bathrooms should be open.
I hope so.
That's the goal. That's the update I'm getting. And then the MRC power is expected next week. And that is all of the updates I have from Public Works.
I have one thing, question. So what about road racing? There's a lot of road racing going on in Red Hawk Parkway. It's terrible.
Okay.
Do, I mean, what do, what can we do?
Well, we've had complaints of racing on Deportola and we have notified RSO. So if you could give me any specific dates or instances?
Every night? I'm not even kidding.
Is it just through the road diet that we did recently that people are just, you, you felt it's excess speed? If that's, if that's the case, you're talking about on the loop?
Oh, yeah, on the loop.
Okay, well, what we could do from a traffic standpoint?
And when I say racing, I don't mean necessarily two cars racing. I just mean that they're, they, very high speed.
Oh, they're doing donuts too in the intersections. Yeah, this is a big problem. It's all throughout the city. You can see the aftermath all over town with the skid marks and the donuts they're doing all over. It's a, it's a major issue that RSO is trying to tackle and sending out patrol and different teams at different times of day and the week to... It's very difficult to catch them because they're just, they're there and they're gone.
Right.
You know?
And I'm shocked nobody has been actually hurt because it's terrible. And also on peppercorn.
Yeah, it's all, it's all throughout the city. It's all throughout, they'll, they'll, they'll kind of go north to south, south to north, through the whole city on a spree. And it's just, it's, it's a very, it's a very difficult problem to tackle that in talking with RSO about it. But it's definitely on their radar and they're, they're trying to do something about it.
Okay. Good to know. Did you have a question for Ron? Oh, okay. All right. Do we have any other questions for Public Works? Mr. Wrong Guy? Nobody? And nobody for King Luke?
Stop saying that.
Okay. All right. Well, it was just so fun to meet. It's just been so long. So we're just so happy to be here and we're going to adjourn the meeting until our next meeting, which will be in August. Crazy.
August 2nd.
August 2nd? The 2nd. Wow, okay. So we'll see you then.
It's, before, before you adjourn, we'll, we'll say the next regularly scheduled meeting because I think August 2nd has been canceled.
Oh, okay. Next regularly scheduled meeting, we'll see you. Be here or be square. Be there or be square? Anyway, meeting adjourned. Bye.